Welcome to the Long Meadow Budget Forum, 11th, 2015. Excuse the voice. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody was waiting until it was over so we could cough. Yeah. We are very sympathetic with anybody out there in the visiting audience or listening audience that may have a cold. We have enough of them here at the front table, including Mr. Grant. He couldn't even make it tonight, apparently. They have, I have some, thank you. They had some kind of bug with through their family last night. As I say, this is a budget forum. In the room, we've got all the division chiefs, I think just about everyone. We've got three or four members from the school committee. Our CFO is in here, and of course, he was on the front panel. We've even got somebody from capital planning in here. And we've got finance in here. So it looks like we've got almost everybody in there. And excuse me, public health and zoning, and I don't know if I missed anybody else. And I will mention, this is likely to be the last official meeting that you'll see all three of our division chiefs, our chief of public works, our chief of police, and our chief of the fire department. All three of these division chiefs have announced their retirement this year. And June through July, I think, all three gentlemen would be retiring after a distinguished amount of service to our community. So this is an heirloom addition. If you're watching on TV, they may pan the cameras and catch these guys. It'll likely be their last public appearance for budget, anyway. Stephen, hand it over to you. You want to start with your presentation?
Sure. I did go through the presentation last week, and if the board, I mean, unfortunately, there may be some folks watching, but I can also post it on the website if we'd rather dispense with the pie charts and get right to the discussion. I'll defer to you.
You know, for the benefit of the people that are watching.
Okay, sure. I'm happy to go through it.
Why don't we do that so they can see what the slides look like?
Sure. Do you want to hit the control of the projector behind you?
Just give us a minute. Just give us a minute to get our camera equipment set up, and then we'll see a slide presentation. Town manager had shown this to the select board at one of our previous meetings, but for those of you who've dialed in tonight to watch the forum, we thought we might as well show what he showed the select board also. It'll just be a couple of minutes, and we should be able to get into it. While we're waiting, is there any select board comments tonight? No? Okay. I don't have any either. After the forum, after we actually go through the forum, we are likely going to talk a little bit more about the budget, and we may try to get some of the preliminary steps out of the way on the approval process. We've got capital and the community preservation we will likely be discussing next Monday. We have another meeting. We'll try to finish up at that meeting. At that meeting, we also, folks, will have Senator Lesser and Republican, excuse me, not Republican, Representative Brian Asher at our meeting also. So it'll be a pretty fair meeting that night. It's going to be pretty busy. And by then, maybe I'll have some of my voice back, too. Stephen, how are you doing?
Two seconds.
Yeah, I'm looking for airtime. They do it all the time on TV.
They do this. They say, "Stretch."
Break for a commercial.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I forgot at our last meeting, our last regular meeting, to congratulate Tim Mulcahy. You talk about retirements. Tim is retiring as the director of CYO basketball for St. Mary's. I think Tim's been coaching for, I think it's over 25 years or so, and even though he looks 80, he's really young, has been coaching since he was a teenager and stuff. So he's kind of led that program. There's been many kids in town, boys and girls, that have played in that program. So I wanted to say congratulations to Tim on his culmination of his coaching career. Just in time for the budget.
Yeah, just in time for the popcorn and the movie.
Excuse me.
Bless you.
Okay.
Where's our health director in here today?
Yeah, we've got public health, shut us down.
Yeah, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be bad. So it's my pleasure to produce to, excuse me, it was not that much of a pleasure to produce, but it is my pleasure to present the fiscal year 2016 Town Manager's Recommended Town Budget. I'd like to reiterate the chair's statements and thank all of the department heads who are present and for all of their hard work in preparing this document and the work that they do day in and day out to manage their budgets effectively and serve the town highly. And I'd also like to thank the members of the finance committee and the capital planning committee as well for the work that they do voluntarily to assist with this process in advance of town meeting to put our legislative branch in the best possible position to decide on the town's appropriations every year. So this is the overall budget summary, and I don't know if everybody can see this, it's kind of small, but this is the budget by function. This is general fund plus enterprise funds. And you can see that the schools are about 53% of the budget. The next largest percentage is public works, followed closely by employee benefits. From there, public safety, debt service is a substantial component, and then down, and then community services, as well as general government. And then this is the expenditures by category. So the largest category at 58% is salaries. The next largest category is, I'm sorry, the next largest category is expenses. And then you have employee benefits and liability insurance. And so the combination of employee benefits and salary are obviously the substantial majority of our town's annual budget, which, you know, it makes sense because we are in the people business, and our raw materials and our products are humans and the services they provide. And then, of course, again, debt service by function is about 8% of the budget. So I'm going to quickly run through the general government budget. And right now, I'm recommending a budget of $1.474 million. That's about $8,000 less than FY15, primarily a reduction in personnel costs for some turnover we had in the finance department. And I want to commend the finance director and his team for really being responsible stewards in their hiring process and looking for savings to help offset pressures elsewhere in the budget. We do have a modest increase in our legal services for our town council. The retainer for the town council hasn't been increased in many years, and the cost to provide those services is now outstripping the fees that we pay. So we're recommending a small increase in that amount. And then we have proposed a $10,000 reduction of reserve fund, reserve fund from $60,000, $50,000. We're fortunate that we don't often have to go to the finance committee for reserve fund requests, which means we've planned ahead very well because the reserve fund is for unforeseen expenses. But it also ties up some of our levy capacity, and so it's not a reflection of the activity of the finance committee. It's more just a precautionary thing. So that's, those are some of the reasons why the budget's less than last year. For public safety, public safety, of course, is two components, the police department and the fire department. The police department is about $2.7 million for FY16. That's about a $43,000 increase. There's a stipend this year that was part of a collective bargaining agreement for patrol officers who answer emergency medical dispatch calls. And then uniforms, equipment, and training for two new officers that will be, that are currently in the academy and will be starting in town very soon. And those are replacing two officers who have left. The fire department is about $2 million. That's just a very modest $13,000 increase, and that only really accounts for mostly steps for fire employees who are achieving another, another, another level in their grade. Planning community development, it's a fairly small part of our budget, about $185,000. Again, that's a decrease of 1,600. One policy change we're making is to make our, what are currently contracted employees who are our plumbing and electrical inspectors, making them both non-benefited, part-time town employees. Financially, it's about a wash. The revenue we collect on each inspection for contracted employees would, by and large, offset the cost to make them part-time town employees, and we believe we would get additional services out of those employees that we don't currently get under our contracts. So the school department budget, we're recommending a general fund budget of $32 million. That's a $718,000 increase. It's about 2.29%, and that is about $39,000 less than the school committee recommended. I do want to say we've worked extremely closely with the school committee and the school department for months, really understand, so we were on the same page, understanding what our revenue situation was town-wide, as well as what our budget stresses were town-wide. And it was only through that communication and sharing of information and working together that we were able to present this balanced budget for the town without the use of reserves and to balance it and really provide for needs town-wide. So I want to commend the superintendent and the school committee for their partnership with the town. Schools are facing some budget pressure with increased utility and personnel costs, but they still, despite those pressures, were able to offer a reduction in the full kindergarten, full-day kindergarten tuition. So they are to be commended as well. So the Department of Public Works, it's obviously a large part of our budget, about $3.5 million, a very small increase of $23,000. Part of that increase is a result of the reallocation of DPW employee time. It's a second year of a three-year process that was based on a study that was done a few years back about the time, the division of time of employee time between the enterprise, work done on enterprise funds and work done on what we'll call general fund work. For example, water department and sewer department employees can go out and plow snow or assist in a street crew on a project, and that's general fund time or snow and ice time, whereas if they are working on a water main or sewer main, that is time that is charged to the enterprise fund. And so we studied that a lot more carefully, and we are in the process of, again, of reallocating the time based on that study. Another policy change we're making is a recommendation of a full-time custodian that would be focused at the Greenwood Center. We have contracted custodial service in town buildings, and the level of service we've seen, especially at Greenwood, which is one of our most heavily-used buildings by the public, especially by vulnerable populations, the senior center, as well as the daycare, really hasn't been up to the standards we'd like. And we feel that having someone who's a town employee and accountable and accessible to us directly would improve that service. All other buildings would remain on a contracted custodial basis. And then there's increases, you can see, for building maintenance, and a lot of that is associated with the high school, simply moving from services that were provided under either warranty or the original construction contract for the school now are going to be contracted services. So that's why that lineup is a little larger as well. Community services, the recommended budget is about $1.5 million. That's a $20,000 decrease from last year. That's, within that mix is an increase in veterans' benefits. We continue to grow our caseload for the veterans, for the veteran services department. There is a new law called the Valor Act II that requires veteran service officers to be certified, and so there's an increased expense budget for the director of veteran services to take the necessary education and training to achieve that certification. There is increased COA expenses, and the salary for the director, we increased the number of hours last year. We want to maintain that increase, and we have hired a new director as well, Amy Sada, who's doing a phenomenal job out there. And there is a reduction in the Parks and Rec Department of about $42,000. We had two vacant daycare positions that weren't needed at this time for the operation of the facility, so we eliminated the two positions. So employee benefit and liability and property insurance, this is, you know, benefits, health insurance, retirement, but then also our insurance for our buildings, our vehicles, things like that. As you can see, it's a substantial increase of about $490,000. We're pleased that we have a 0% increase in our health insurance premiums, and we thanked Scannick Valley Health Collaborative to, for their decision to not increase health insurance premiums. We did receive a larger increase in our retirement assessment at Hampton County Retirement Board. Some of that was expected, or she was expected, it's a reflection of contracts being ratified since we last adopted the budget, as well as increases throughout the retirement system. We also are increasing our contribution to our OPEB trust fund, and that was to comply with a policy that was adopted by the select board. Debt service, about $4 million, $3.9 million in debt service for the town. There's an overall decrease in debt service. The debt service that is subject to override that had been previously approved is going up about $30,000. So comparing the two years' budgets FY16 versus what we're recommending for FY16, you can see, I'll just go to the bottom line, the operating budget is only 1.3% higher than the FY15 budget, and we think that that's, you know, really an exceptional amount of work to get to that number with the budget pressures that we had. As you recall, in October, when we first projected the townwide budget, including the schools, we were looking at a deficit in the neighborhood of $60,000 that assumed taxing to the full capacity of our proposition two-and-a-half levy limit. So not only were we able to eliminate that deficit, we were able to come in operationally well under the two-and-a-half percent for the operational budget. As we've discussed before, the FY16 recommended budget does propose a two-and-a-half percent increase to use our full levy capacity, but the difference between the 1.3 and that is largely due to increased spending of capital per the select board policy. This is just a, I have a separate presentation on the capital plan that we may go over Monday night, but basically, I recommended about $3.4 million in projects. That was about a million, 1.4 in roads, sidewalks, and drains, about 661 in facilities, $470,000 in equipment, and then about $828,000 in water and sewer. The capital planning committee did a very thorough job evaluating the projects, and they recommended slightly less, about $3.3 million. And again, I thanked them for the work. It was a, this year, an extension of what we started last year, that it was actually better this year because of the Community Preservation Act Committee adjusted their timeline so they could get through their deliberative process in advance of the capital planning committee process to avoid duplication of effort. In the past, because we wanted to get certain projects done, applications were submitted to both the Community Preservation Act Committee and the Capital Planning Committee for recommendation and approval, and it would be the same projects. So to eliminate that duplication, we worked a CPA in advance, and then when the recommended plan got to the capital planning committee, they already knew what the CPA's recommendations were. So I want to commend both of those committees for doing a thorough job and making what I think are very solid recommendations to the select board. So that's, that's it briefly. I hope I didn't go too fast. I can certainly go back if anybody needs me to.
Any comments from the audience? Thank you, Stephen. Good overview. I don't think, yeah, yeah. They're going to clear up, and we're going to have some comments come in from the screen.
Okay. I'm Janet Robinson, Chair of the School Committee, and I'd just like to reiterate what Stephen had said, is that we've worked very hard with, with the town and the select board in trying to balance a very difficult budget. At this point, we have not received a request from the select board or the town to reduce our budget by $39,000. And so our committee has not discussed it nor voted on it. So what I would respectfully request is that a, if that is your intent, to please make that request in writing to our finance subcommittee so that it can be discussed and then brought before the entire school committee for a vote to see whether they are willing to amend our budget or not.
Stephen?
We had understood that. We discussed that the other night. I think we had held off on making the request until the board had finished deliberating the budget and getting to whatever the final number was.
Okay.
But once the board has finished its deliberations, that's something we talked about.
Okay. So we'll be looking for that, then. Thank you.
It'll be in the mail.
It's in the mail.
Any other comments? It's going to be a lonely night, isn't it, Paul? Okay, thanks, Steve. I'll tell you what, we had talked a little bit before, after the forum, that we would progress into some of the budget discussion. We basically, I think we have three elements here. We have the operational budget, and then we have, we could split up and say we got community preservation budget, and we got the capital improvement budget. That pretty well makes up the three pieces. We've had two pretty full meetings where we've talked about the budget prior to this evening. I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion if somebody wants to push motion up to approve the operational side of our budget.
I move to approve the operational side of the budget.
Town manager's recommended budget.
Town manager's recommended budget.
Your second, hon.
A motion to approve the town manager's recommended operational budget.
Right.
I guess, I was hoping to discuss it rather than go through the process we did last year, which was vote on the, you know, have this amendment, have this motion on the floor, and then amend it, amend it, amend it, or potentially amend it, as opposed to potentially discuss it, and then offer one motion that would be with any discussions that we've come to as a, to a consensus on, just to try to avoid the...
Is there anything, is there anything up in the air on the, on the operational budget?
Well, there's still several items that were recommended by the, our finance subcommittee that we want, I don't know that we've fully discussed or talked about. What was changing the...
The reason I put the motion on first, so we don't discuss, and then put the motion, and then discuss again. And if we have a series of amendments, then we can say with the following amendments, so...
Some ways, it's easier to track if it's amended.
Yeah, because we've discussed, I think, every issue that was brought by the subcommittee. I guess we didn't do, but we didn't vote on each individual issue. So you want a second and get it into discussion?
Fine, I'll second it to get it into discussion.
Okay. Then you want to, the subcommittee, you want to take the floor mark and come forward with your discussion elements?
Not necessarily as the subcommittee. I'm just, I think we've already talked about it. I think there were, if I recall, three particular elements that we were concerned about. One was the, you know, the snow plowing budget not fairly representing anything we've ever had in the last six or eight years. And although we're allowed by state law to override, overspend on the snow plowing budget line to budget $100,000 year after year, with our fingers crossed that there's free cash or some other way to make up for the difference later on is, you know, is not truth in budgeting to some degree. And I understand that you don't want to overly budget because it doesn't make sense doing that, but, you know, if you look at the numbers, the least we've spent on snow plowing in that we've got the history of here is something like $160,000 against the $100,000 budget. So the thought process was increase that line item from 100 to maybe $125,000 or $130,000. And in order to do that, we've got to find a place to grab money from, pardon that expression of grabbing money, because that's not what it is.
Did you, did you have a specific amendment of what to increase and where to decrease?
Well, we had discussed a couple of places. One was, you know, that, that in some of our overtime budgets, particularly in our police and fire overtime budgets, we have not spent the budgeted amount the last couple of years, and so we could, you know, remove some money from that. And I think there were some other line items we were looking for.
How much you propose in removing?
I'm just trying to, let me just make sure I've got the right numbers here.
Because you had talked about an increase, increase in that snow count by 30,000, correct?
Right, but I, you know, I think that...
I guess the only concern I have is looking at the board, since we're short a member, we very well could end up with two, two votes for everything. So we could keep trying and see...
Which was the reason I was looking to not necessarily have a motion tonight, but rather a discussion on it. You're right.
I think that it would be nice if we had a specific motion, though, so at least we know where we're going forward. If you're talking $25,000 and removing it from there, it'd be nice to, we sort of solidify the amendments, and then we can try to move forward or, you know, instead of trying to figure it out now, is there a specific place you've been really, the subcommittee was looking to, want to move to increase the snow budget?
The answer is yes. I mean, you know, the, there was, was, you know, originally, it said $10,000 from the police overtime budget, which has, again, not been fully out, fully expended in each of the last three years at least, and $10,000 from the fire department overtime budget, which has also not been fully expended in the last three years, you know? And I'm trying to think, Paul, where was, where else did we have, Paul, that we were looking for?
Actually, I thought that the police and fire overtime, we were looking at a cut, combining them, cutting them 50,000, moving that money over to the reserve fund, and that the snow budget would come from increases in the snow budget. When you look at the retiring, as Richard mentioned, we have three, three department heads that are retiring that...
Those were the other line items. That when the budget was prepared, we knew that the fire chief was retiring, and so the line item for the fire chief's salary had been slightly reduced. But we did not, at that time, know that the police chief and the DPW chief were retiring. We thought we could slightly reduce those line items as well for the salaries for those individuals, and so that would make up a part of the difference as well. Thanks, Paul.
What number were you talking?
Can I ask a question? Stephen, one of the things that we talked about is, because there's a, the, in going about the, what do I want to say, the hiring of a fire chief was, you know, there's, there's some money that's going to be expended for that. There's a dollar amount in the budget up to, well, I shouldn't say it's in the budget. There's a reduction in the budget in the fire chief's salary line item by 5,000 to pay for the search, is a, for better word, lack of a better word?
No, I mean, those funds will be expended out of FY15, and the proposed reduction of the fire chief was FY16. So that's...
Right, but I thought you said the money coming to pay for the search was coming out of that line item because we knew the salary was going to go down.
Well, no, because we're paying, we won't be paying the chief after a certain day, after May 22nd.
This year.
This year.
Okay.
But it is coming out of FY15 budget.
FY15 budget, correct.
For the search.
Does it, can I... Can I just offer a comment on the snow and ice budget? I mean, I appreciate what Mark is saying about the budget. You know, it sometimes doesn't line up, I would say, for more public consumption. That is a common thing in the state. And, you know, the Department of Revenue kind of monitors how communities comply with, or not comply, but they monitor the deficit spending because they don't want communities to abuse the ability to do that. And so you have to have a level of budget for snow and ice that is acceptable to the state and so --
You can't budget a dollar, if that's right.
Right. You can't budget, you know, ten thousand dollars and run it two hundred thousand every year. They would really, they would, I don't know what the mechanism for enforcement is, but they would basically push you to upgrade the budget. We have not, we're not in that situation. No concern's been raised by the state. So, there's not a need to do this other than having it more accurate or reflected. And we don't have an issue paying for the snow and ice bills at the end of the season with free cash or operational stabilization or some other kind of accounts. I just want to clarify that we're not, we're not trying to solve, we're not trying to fix something that's in deficit. It's more about having the numbers line up more consistently each year. You know that, I'm just trying to clarify it for --
Right, I think the comment that Paul said is that it's been a hundred thousand dollars for the last, as long as we can remember, and maybe it's time to move it up a little bit since none of us can remember when we've only spent a hundred thousand dollars on snow removal. That's the point. It really is. And it does put less of a burden on us in the fall, every annual town meeting, when we've got to go balance the snow budget.
But it puts a burden on us.
In 2016, it'll put, or 2017, no, 2016 Annual Town Meeting, it'll put a twenty-five thousand less burden on us to balance that town budget, that snow line.
The only thing I'd say, Mark, is the burden of balancing the operational budget has been more difficult than the burden of having the free cash to pay for the snow and ice budget. So, it's, you're creating, I think, an incrementally larger headache on the operational side to relieve a headache on the, you know, expenditure side on the free cash side. I don't, I mean, I don't disagree in principle, I'm just saying it does create issues that aren't necessarily, we don't necessarily need to create for ourselves at this time.
And it clearly does take thirty to fifty thousand dollars out of the active budget, as opposed to how we normally do it, is at the end of the year, you get free cash, you get whatever. So, I mean, this is out of your active budget as you're starting your budget program. So there's however much they want, thirty to fifty, that will be removed from some other program. Go ahead, Marie.
Well, it's sort of like, these are issues we discussed the last meeting, and if we're not ready to go forward with an actual, where are you going to pull it from and move forward? It's just, you know, again stating the position theoretically why you want to make these changes. Maybe we're not really to go forward into it.
But we are ready, and we've got, I'll tell you, five thousand dollars from police overtime, five thousand from fire overtime, I think five thousand from the police chief's salary, and five thousand from the DPW director's salary.
That's only twenty thousand.
So we move it to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Was that a motion you're making?
The motion to amend.
Yeah.
Fine, I'll make a motion to amend the budget to add twenty thousand dollars to the snow removal budget to make it a hundred and twenty thousand dollars by reducing five thousand dollars from police overtime, five thousand dollars from fire overtime, five thousand dollars from police chief's salary, and five thousand dollars from the DPW director's salary.
I'll second that for discussion.
So that's, okay. So now we're under discussion, and I think we've already pretty well had the discussion. I think people may not understand what we're actually doing, is we're just kind of moving money from Peter to pay Paul and all, one time. The way they're proposing now is we're going to put the money in the budget upfront. And the way we've been doing it is we worry about it because we're allowed to deficit spend in that account, so we don't have to worry about it until it's actually spent. And at that time, we go to our CFO and he finds money and we pay the bill off at the end of the year. That's really all we're doing. Effectively, though, we are removing about twenty thousand dollars from the active budget and obligating it for a snow account, so. And that's the only account that we've got that we can deficit spend in. So there really is a lot of nice in having an account that you can deficit spend.
And make no mistake about it, we're still going to be deficit spending.
Well, I understand, but it's nice --
By twenty thousand dollars less.
But I take credit with what Stephen said, is that nobody has questioned what we're doing. So apparently what we're doing is acceptable within the state, and it certainly is an attractive way to run a budget when you can have a deficit and pay for it later than having to pay it upfront.
Yeah, and I think up till now, we've really been good in that we're not taking free cash for the operational budget in the fall. And that, I understand, has really been noticed and appreciated by our rating agency. And this is the one place that we can leave it float. And again, we're talking about whether we're going to have increased snow or warmer weather coming up and the, and it's just bringing it closer, but it's not something that affects our rating or it's not considered an appropriate practice to deficit spend in this area. But I can understand why you're saying you want to bring it closer to what we're doing. In the past few years, it has been going higher than a hundred.
Yeah, I think, Marie, that the objective of budgeting, in my opinion, ought to be to prepare a budget that's as close to what really happens as can be. And not prepare a budget that you know that we're going to end up with two-hundred, three-hundred, four-hundred thousand, we've had up to a million dollars in free cash at the end of the year, which for everybody at home means money we taxed people that we didn't really need because we ended up not spending it. Sometimes it's very extraordinary reasons that we made to spend it, but we didn't. In an ideal world, we end up with a budget at the end of the year where the money we bring in is the money we spend. And if that were to happen, we'd end up having to reach into our savings account, which is our reserve fund, to pay for the, pay for snow plowing. And so, this whole concept of preparing a budget where you budget for what you spend and spend what you budget would include a realistic snow plowing budget. The problem is, you never know how much it's going to snow one winter, whether you're going to get twenty inches of snow or forty inches of snow, or more correctly, five storms or forty storms. And so, you budget for something conservative, recognizing what you've got to do, but clearly we're so far off, that's the one reason I think we got to be closer.
I like it. Paul, do you have a, what's your feelings on that?
I have a whole different idea, quite honestly, that would create a whole other amount of debate. And that would be to, we have the Governor's Budget that came in at a hundred thousand dollars more than we budgeted. I know people don't want to utilize it because it's not cast in stone. Snow plowing is not going to happen, hopefully until next December again. We'll have a town meeting. If that Governor's Budget comes in higher, that we make the move at that point in time with, you know, whatever. We don't have to worry about twenty thousand dollars. If it's the hundred thousand we get, we could put in fifty or the hundred thousand dollars in the snow plowing.
And I guess I'd like to add that if, you know, Mark, you made the comment that the overtime budgets haven't been fully spent, and we haven't recruited for any of the three department head positions yet. And if we're able to negotiate starting salaries that are, in fact, less than what's budgeted, then at the end of FY-15, some of that free cash will be the sources you just cited. And in effect, the effect of what you're trying to get, I mean, it would be through free cash, but the same money could go towards it. Like I said, it just, it's tough for me to say, because of the challenges we face in getting this budget to balance out and, you know, it comes down to a five grand here or there, as you just noted, I just am concerned about making the change until we have to.
Let me ask specifically, though, in the eyes of the CFO, if you have a count that you can deficit spend, what is your feelings about pushing more money into that account instead of deficit spending?
Well, I agree with that. We should put more money in because historically, we've not even come close to this hundred thousand dollars, so we should make it more realistic. And what that amount is, I mean, we can do some five-year averaging or something to that nature to come up with that. So I agree with that concept. It's just a question of, you know, how we get it done. What I do want to say, though, when it comes to the overtime expenditures, that the police overtime expenditure in FY-14 was two-hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. The budget is two-hundred and thirty thousand. There's not a lot of leeway to play with that if we have the same type of overtime in FY-16 as we did in 14. And FY, between FY-14 and FY-15, there are also contractual salary agreements that would have increased that by certain percentages, too. So if we, you know, look at that two thousand and fourteen number, increase it by three percent, I mean, we're already over the two thousand and sixteen amount. In regard to the fire department, there was a very small amount of overtime expended in FY-14 because we were relying on insurance money from an officer, from a firefighter who was out in IOD. That's why that number is remarkably low at a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars because it was offset by a tremendous amount of reinsurance, of insurance money. You go back to FY-13, you spent two-hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in overtime, and the budget for FY-16 is two-hundred and twenty thousand. You know, you're cutting it right to the edge on both of those accounts, in my opinion.
Okay, so in principle, the CFO agrees on flushing up the account, but he has a different way of going about it. So I guess it depends on whether we want to vote on this or if we want to follow the direction of our CFO's recommendation. So have you given consideration to what Paul had said on that?
Yeah, I mean, we talked to Paul in our Finance Subcommittee. I mean, I've absolutely heard Paul's statement.
Okay. And you still feel that your amendment is the proper way for the Board to go? Okay. Any more discussion?
Yeah, if I could.
Yeah.
Thank you. Monday night, we heard a lot of, well, we can take care of it next year and, you know, we'll see how it goes this year and we'll take care of it next year. I've heard that throughout the years, that let's let it run this year, it's too late in the budget cycle and that type of thing. I think we just need to go back a couple of steps and realize that we have a balanced budget because we had a negotiated zero percent salary increase for our townside unions. And we basically, not basically, we did renegotiate some debt. So basically, we put some debt on what I call a credit card, which were bands, and then we put them on a mortgage. We elongated the repayment schedule. And with those two items and put aside the police, the salary settlements that came in at zero, the debt itself would have put us in a two-hundred and nineteen thousand deficit for the year. Plus, we upped the capital spending this year to only take out eighteen thousand dollars of capital to put it into the operational budget. So when you start taking a look at things and saying, you know, possibly, I think it was mentioned, to rob Peter to pay Paul, we've already done that. This is the time to handle it, is that we haven't voted on the budget, this is the time to handle it. And there are items in the budget, and Paul, you talked about police overtime and went back to FY-13, which we have on our sheets here. And it's remarkable how the numbers are essentially the same. As you said, fire department probably would have been the same if we didn't have the insurance from the IOD and, excuse me, the IOD case. It doesn't seem to have moved up or down from the budgeted amounts. And I think part of the discussion that Mark and I had was that the way you start to manage things is to see if you can squeeze money is to start making some cuts somewhere. And we've heard from our chiefs at our meeting on Monday night about their feelings on that, and I think we need to take all that in consideration. But, you know, to say that we're going to take care of it next year, or we just had the School Committee Chair come before us and say that their budget was forty thousand dollars more than what was submitted. So if we're going to take that attitude of potentially using the Governor's number, which is just the Governor's number, we know it has to still go through the legislative process, and it could be a zero percent increase, dollar amount along that, or it could be a hundred-plus increase, depends on how, where that all comes out. But the issue, I think, is that you handle it now and not next year, because we've already handled it next year by pushing off debt to two-hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And we're talking about potentially bonding some other programs, and we had a slight discussion about that on Monday night, that we're going to take the things off the credit card and put them right back on the credit card. And I think that we've gone through this before, and this is a year that we probably should have saved a lot of money within our budget because of the salary increases at zero percent on the union side, and we did it. And I know where it went in the budget, I see it in the budget, and I still think that there's some room to squeeze money out of the budget.
Okay, good. We had, we had the, was, there was a motion and then there was an amendment to the motion?
So, yeah.
What was the amendment to the motion again?
To take five thousand dollars from the, oh, here it is, to take five thousand dollars from the fire department overtime, five thousand dollars from the DPW director's salary? Five thousand dollars from the police chief's salary, and five thousand dollars from police department overtime? Or fire, it was both, it was both police department overtime.
Total of twenty thousand dollars?
With a total of twenty thousand dollars. That would be added to the snow and ice.
And the primary motion was to increase it by thirty?
No, 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 to accept the Town Manager's Recommended Town Budget.
So, just, you know, we're on Mark's amendment on snow and ice.
Right. Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
No.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Wait a second. What were we voting for, in favor of the amendment?
The amendment.
Okay, so let's, Paul, were you in favor of the amendment?
It's not enough. Okay. So then we will, we can't run through an evening where we're all two-twos. That's going to be very counterproductive, so. That's the direction the Board wants to take.
On two-two, it doesn't pass.
Doesn't pass.
No, we will, we're not going to run through all these items just for --
That doesn't mean it's going to happen on all the items.
Senseless discussion. If we need our third member, we'll just wait till Monday and bring our other select board member in. To spend all this time talking about issues just to have them fail, this seems to be a waste of time. Do you disagree with me? I mean, I'm certainly willing to stay here at eleven o'clock discussing stuff that we fail.
I'm not looking to fail, I'm looking for just people to hear what people have to say. I mean, if it is two to two.
It doesn't pass.
It doesn't pass.
So we can go on to the next one. Or we can go on to Monday.
Come up ahead Monday.
But then he could bring it up again on Monday.
And it could pass on Monday, or it could fail. Depends, and if he feels strongly in favor of it, he'll bring it up, and if he doesn't, he won't. Right?
That's true.
Okay, we'll try one more, and we'll see where that goes. And if it goes two-two, we're going to shut down this senseless activity then until we get our third or our other select board member in here, so we can get a final binding vote from the Board, so. Okay, what's next?
The other was to defer the purchase of the police vehicle for 2016 and put that money into the reserve fund, pending a review of the, where we are with the vehicles.
And what was, what was the reason for that?
One of the things, well, part of it is the number of vehicles we have. The other is that we heard that this past winter, because of the severity of the winter, the primary vehicles weren't driven as much. My personal opinion is that police vehicles, we ought to be getting a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy thousand miles, and I'd love to see us have a policy where we ought to try to get a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy thousand miles short of, you know, somebody coming to us and saying the transmission fell out of the bottom of this vehicle and it doesn't go. It's not going to go past a hundred and forty thousand miles. But, you know, I think that, you know, we ought to try to get more use out of the vehicles. We've had, we've got twelve police vehicles, none of them have more than seventy thousand miles on them right now. And of our primary, not, certainly a few of those Crown Vics have well over a hundred thousand miles, but of our primary vehicles, and, you know, it would free up money that we could use on some other things.
Okay, well, you're, there seems to be somewhat of established policies on vehicle usage for law enforcement. I've never heard of anybody wanting to push them to a hundred and fifty thousand miles. It may be good if it's a B and U vehicle or something else that's not critical, but I think when you're on a pursuit, or even if you're in an emergency situation, you want the best vehicle you can get under your personnel, and to push it to one sixty or even assimilate that's a little bit excessive.
Wait, is there a second on the motion?
No, he's not made a motion.
Oh, I thought he did.
He was just talking. You can't get him to make a motion, he likes to talk and then we'll make a motion.
All right, I'll move, delete thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars from the budget for a police vehicle replacement.
Second.
Thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
Go ahead, Stephen.
What's that based on, Mark? The hundred and sixty thousand miles, is that based on?
Nothing, just based on why are we getting the same mileage out of a vehicle in two thousand and fifteen that we got in two thousand, the year two thousand, you know, with cars that we think are more reliable? You know, I have no basis for it, other than the fact that, you know, we're not trading the vehicles in to get more mileage, they're just sitting in the back lot. You know, when we say we're not driving the cars over the wintertime because they're not capable, we're driving other vehicles in the wintertime, we literally have six more months of life on them.
I wonder why we're going through this again when we went through this at the Subcommittee level and three other times. And I thought the Subcommittee's were to go through the stuff and answer these questions. The questions were answered. You kind of make it sound like we've got a dozen patrol vehicles sitting around unused, and that's not the case. We have, I think, four, three or four prime patrol vehicles. We do have vehicles that are taken out of frontline service. Right now, they're primarily Crown Victorias that are now, that are no longer made. And they do, they aren't used as often, but they are used, they are used on details. They are used for training for our officers, what they call skid school, because we don't want our frontline vehicles going there. So it's not like if a call comes in, an officer has twelve vehicles to choose from to go on a call. Uh, the vehicles we have are out all the time, and it's not just the mileage, it's the hours. And why, to answer your question, since two thousand to now, why aren't we getting more, um, use out of a vehicle? Because the police department, who's in the vehicles every day, knows that they just don't perform as well when you hit a certain threshold. And across police, every police department I've encountered, a hundred thousand seems to be about that time. We've discussed internally trying to stretch those out a little more now that the Ford Explorer is kind of the new standard for what we call interceptors. But they're still relatively new in that role, and we don't know what we're going to get out of them. Um, so I, I appreciate your point, and we certainly want to be able to get as much out of our vehicles as we possibly can. But to arbitrarily say, you know, a hundred and sixty thousand miles, you know, if it's, if it's, your house is getting robbed and the transmission drops out while they're responding, that would be kind of a big deal. And we'd feel pretty bad about trying to stretch the vehicles out. So, and I don't know if the, if Chief Siano has anything to add to that.
I can just tell you that Ford Motor Company, uh, on a police car, will tell you that whatever your mileage is, multiply that times four, and that will give you engine transmission hours or mileage. So if you've got a hundred thousand miles on a police car, it's like putting four hundred thousand miles on your car.
Yeah, did you know, Chief, is there, is there anything out there that you're reading in your journals or from your conferences where police departments are starting to push the mileages up on their replacement fleet?
These are brand-new vehicles. We don't know how they're going to perform as yet. They might very well go a hundred and sixty mile, a hundred and sixty thousand miles, but we don't. Typically, when it gets over a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five, thirty thousand miles, the car is so loose and unreliable that we don't use it for first-line service.
Right. But, I mean, you're not hearing anything, though. There's nothing, nothing rumor around.
They've only been around two years.
Right, okay. Yeah, but I mean, it's just that. But I mean, the, the whole, the whole angle that Mark's talking about is the technological changes that have taken place in the last ten years in vehicles. I'm just wondering, but there's nothing in the service.
That I've heard.
And Eric, you don't get into it that much because you don't run your vehicles that high, so be in your pursuit vehicles, okay? Murray?
There was no second on the motion.
There was no, Paul's second.
Oh, he did?
I did second.
Okay. Um, no, um, we discussed it on Monday, and the police chief, and we had readouts. And, um, I think it's reasonable, the fleet management plan that the department has presented. So that's my position on it.
I'd like to chime in on one thing, and Stephen's, Stephen's brought up, I think, a fairly decent point. We've had two budget meetings, and they've been fairly decent meetings, and we've discussed these issues. This will be the third time we've discussed this issue. And I just wonder how many more times we want to discuss it before we're not going to discuss it anymore.
The only, but up till now, there's been no chance to, to put forward as a motion to change the.
There was at the last meeting, we asked for motions, and nobody wanted to push a motion forward. I asked the subcommittee if you had motions to push forward, so we could start to get.
I missed, I missed that, because I didn't think we were, we were amending the, the budget at that point.
Well, at this point, I mean, we, this is the third time we've discussed it.
And there's no need to further discuss it, but that was a recommendation, and so I put forward the motion. It's clearly, you know, it looks like it's going to be another two-two vote, so let's move forward.
Yeah, that's a.
Move forward the vote and then move on.
And I'm not sure what, what you're getting at, because we didn't put motions on the floor. There was no motion to accept the budget either, Monday night.
No, we weren't going to accept the budget Monday night. We were looking at some of these small amendments to get the amendments done, Paul.
And I thought specifically, we said at the end of the meeting that, or towards the end of the meeting, that if there was enough time after the forum, then we can talk about the specific recommendations made by the.
No, we were actually, we wanted to, to leave the whole budget approval until after the forum, but we were, we certainly could have voted on these other small amendments.
You did vote on some of that.
Yeah, we voted on one.
Yeah.
I mean, we could have had these things already debated now the way, and then we'd be back down to base business. But I, I'm somewhat, I'm somewhat leery to move forward, because we do have one member that's expressed a lot of interest in some issues that he's unable to attend to tonight, that's not here. And we've already gone through one vote that ended up two-two, and we're just going to have to rehash the whole thing again Monday night. So I'm more of the opinion that why are we wasting time? Why don't we just wait till Monday night? And we got the whole board. Uh, we're going to be pushed, though, because we've got a lot on the agenda. It'll likely be a late meeting. But I don't see any value in going two-two votes, Mr. Gold. I just.
I, I don't either, but you asked for motions, so I'm.
Well, I, I figured that we had discussed this enough, the discussion was over, and we're ready to push forward.
I guess so. We, we thought so, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we voted, and it went two-two, so that's not helping us. Okay, uh, so the motion is on this one to not purchase a, a vehicle from the police department. But I, I don't know the base, and, and we're still in discussion. I don't understand why you have just suddenly said we're not going to purchase this vehicle because of there's a possibility that the fleet can be extended. I would think that there would be a conclusion made that the fleet can be extended before we make a proposal not to purchase.
Then you ought to vote against the motion.
Well, no, it's, we're in discussion. I have a right to vote to discuss.
On Monday night, we did hear, we did hear the potential for that.
I didn't hear any reason to not buy a vehicle.
We heard that the two trucks that we don't use as primary vehicles were used primarily during the wintertime because.
That's trucks. That's different, Paul. We're talking about the police vehicles specifically.
If the two trucks that were used, as opposed to two vehicles that were used primarily during the wintertime, that means mileage weren't put on, mileage wasn't put on vehicles, correct?
Okay.
So if there's six months' worth of, or five months' worth of, of mileage that wasn't used, shouldn't that extend the life of a vehicle?
Can I clarify that, and if I'm wrong, sir?
That's what I was told. That's what we were told.
That's not really what you were told.
Sure we were.
A pickup truck in an unmarked Tahoe that's a supervisor's vehicle that gets, because the supervisor's car is wheel-wheel drive, so the supervisors use a Tahoe that, that was purchased in two thousand and ten, um, as a vehicle for inclement weather. The marked patrol cars got used all the time because we switched the Explorers that are all-wheel drive. So no mileage on the patrol cars got reduced by the use of a pickup truck or an unmarked Tahoe.
Okay, that wasn't said then.
Okay. Sorry.
Let's.
Yeah, well, you know, as I say, I keep coming back to, I would think there would be a real strong basis for a decision not to purchase a vehicle, such as there's too many vehicles or something along that line.
Quite frankly, Rich, I think that's the basis of what we're going by. If you take away the, the chief's vehicle, that you have eleven vehicles, one's a detective car. You know, there's, there's eleven vehicles that can be used for some sort of, of patrol, and one's now, we were told, one's a skid car, or potentially going to be a skid car for a train-in.
Right.
Uh, one, you know, isn't necessarily used much. So that was the genesis, that there was, there's eleven vehicles that are not, that are not the chief's car. Let's put it that way.
Right, and, and I think, I can't recall all the discussion, but it seemed like we did ask you to, the chief of police, to lay out what the vehicles were used, or, and I thought there was fairly well agreement at the end of that discussion. There didn't seem to be any question that, that your feet, uh, your fleet plan seemed valid, but maybe it wasn't. I, I know there's vehicles you've got in your fleet that you're not having on the road. You've got a couple old Crown Vics you're using on the skid. Folks, when he trains a new officer, they take these vehicles down to a skid course, and, and they just literally beat them up. The officers are learning how to drive under extremely adverse conditions. You do not want a new patrol car there. So that's why the chief has got these extra vehicles laying around that we throw on the skid course. Every police department in America, unless they're a multimillion-dollar police department, has old vehicles used on skids. Uh, so if you hear these things, it's not, huh?
In our road details, and one of the things we've discovered this year is that, especially when we're, when we're doing work for, say, utility companies, um, the old Crown Vics that we deploy on, during road details to have the lights flashing, so people see the officer on the road.
Right.
Generate income.
Right.
They're only worth about a thousand bucks on trade-in, and I think we generate about five thousand so far, year-to-date, in revenue from using these cars on, built outside the town to, like, some utility companies and things like that. So they do, they actually more than pay for themselves to have them.
And I am a thousand percent believer that if that fleet can extend by ten, fifteen thousand miles, then it's a very valid thing to extend the fleet. But that question hasn't been answered yet. There's only two years into this new fleet, this new, and it's, it's going nationwide. I think these different, smaller vehicles are going in the pursuit vehicles, so, yeah, that's where I have the difficulty with it. Yeah, go ahead, Murray.
Yeah, I don't think this discussion's going to get anywhere.
I don't think it is.
Because we've been given the information numerous times. We, the, the chief came out, uh, the town manager gave us a very, a complete, um, fleet plan, and the cutting of the police vehicles is something I hear almost every year. So I don't think anyone's going to change their mind here, and it's going to be two-two, so maybe we should just move on.
There's no purpose in having two-two, because that just, that just, I want a full board. If we're going to vote something down, I want the full board sitting here smiling, voting it down.
All right, I'll draw the motion.
Yeah, that's, okay. Uh, I don't think we're going to accomplish anything else if, if all these issues are going to go like this tonight. So I guess we'll, uh, entertain, I would love to, I'd love to approve the base budget, but I don't think we can.
I have a question, if I could, for the town manager.
Sure.
Um, procedurally, adding money to the line item for legal counsel. Theoretically, we have to approve the, into a contract with legal counsel at a set rate and, and that type of thing. Obviously, that doesn't happen until somewhere in the summertime and after the fiscal year, I don't know if it's prior to fiscal year.
I think it's after the election, you have the organizational meeting, you choose town council.
Okay. This is in anticipation of that, correct? It's not, obviously, FY fifteen going backwards, or is it?
It's not a retro pay. No, it would be in anticipation going forward.
It's going forward, okay. Oh, the other question I have, custodian, it just popped in as you were doing a presentation. Logistically, who is the custodian going to be reporting to at Greenwood? Is it both the COA director and the folks at the, at the Greenwood Center School?
It would be the director, or the facilities director.
Okay. That was, that was the other question.
Yeah, I didn't, I did not clarify that. That was.
No, no, that was just a question, yeah.
Okay, Stephen, are you fully aware of all these items that are going to be discussed Monday?
If it's the same thing we've gone over, I mean, I don't, I don't, like I said, I don't mind answering questions. I just, I just don't want to keep going back.
We're to the point of just taking a vote on these issues. I think we've discussed them in pretty good detail.
We have. The one, you know, I, there was the policy decision, or the policy recommendation on the inspectors. Paul, I know you had questions about that. Um, you know, I had, we have the department heads here. If you wanted to ask the, um, building commissioner who oversees them, his use on, you're welcome to. If you want to discuss it offline, we can do that, too. Um, but I know there were questions, there were questions about, I mean, the reason why they're all here tonight is if they're, they, they, only the fire, police, and DPW were there on Monday night. If you had questions related to any other area of the budget, it gives you a chance to, and so it gives the public a chance to hear from them directly. So I just, so, but we can also talk, discuss it at a later date, so, Chief.
Well, no, there's validity to what you just said. We just won't take a vote on the stuff. So why, you have some issues. We do have the rest of the division chief. So is there anything, does the subcommittee? Yeah, we'd like to. Paul, why don't you come on up?
Of course, I'm going to, I'm going to catch y'all from tomorrow. We're extending the meeting.
Could have had a motion to.
Yeah, absolutely, Paul.
The proposal is to pay two inspectors that we all use on. Contractual basis, that if our inspection fee is a hundred dollars, they get a piece of that inspection fee, the rest goes to the town. And that's for plumbing and electrical. So the first question, um, that I had with the town manager was, when we already have, um, an electrician and a plumber in town, you know, that work for the town, could they be an inspector? And I understand they would have to go through additional training. But to bring these, these folks on as a non-benefited position, I understand twenty hours, and I can receive benefits. What, what's the, what's the reason why? Because I, I don't see, I haven't heard any complaints about inspections not getting tended to. I haven't heard complaints trickling up from you to the town manager, to the board, that we can't get the job done. Why change it now?
No, it's not, everything is getting done perfectly, but it's the procurement laws. What is it, chapter thirty?
Thirty-B.
Thirty-B. If, if they get paid over ten thousand a year, it's supposed to go out to bed. So by putting it out to bed, it's, it's going to be tough to keep track on stuff. So I just suggest, as the town manager, put, uh, bring them on as a, as a town employee, it would be easier.
Right, so the question, because we're going to, there's, and I understand the line item in the budget changes slightly.
Yeah.
Okay, and there's still going to be revenue, because if they're getting paid by the town, we get, I'm assuming we're going to get a hundred percent of the inspection fee. Right, as opposed to that piece of it, because they're now, they're now receiving salary. But is there twenty hours' worth of work for them a week? Because I can't imagine that there was twenty hours' worth of inspections a week. That's what my question is.
Probably not twenty hours, but, you know, fifteen, twenty hours we put out there. That's the number we came up with because of the, the amount they were getting paid per year. It was like seventeen thousand average per year.
Between the two?
No, each.
Each, rather, right, okay. That's what I meant.
Now, Paul, you could also, Mr. Haley, you could also use these employees to do.
Other stuff, yeah.
Some of the follow-up inspections that you have.
Follow-up and answer, you know, be in the office more for, when people call with questions about plumbing, electrical.
Right, and also.
Right now, they're there for one hour, Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Also, some of the issues that you go out and you check on, when you get a complaint on properties, I mean, the staff.
Yeah, by that time, I could send more of the miles, say, hey, can you go and check in this and take a picture or whatever.
So it's not just the fifteen hours. They're likely as well over twenty hours with the work available.
Yeah, you could, you could find twenty hours with the work, no problem. But I think, you know, that was the number we threw out. Fifteen is kind of where I was going. Fifteen hours would probably suffice for each one.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's less than twenty hours. It's not necessarily twenty hours, it's less than twenty, because that's the cap for benefits.
And they don't need benefits running at that.
And we did, there is a legisla, there is a statutory provision that prevents people from being, from doing licensed work in a jurisdiction that they inspect. So that would mean our electrician and plumber couldn't do work in our own buildings.
If they were your inspectors.
If they were also the inspectors.
Yeah, the plumbing inspector, there's, there's, um, what section is it?
We're sure about that.
Yeah, there is a law against it. The electrical inspector.
They can't inspect their own work.
He can't work in the jurisdiction that he's inspecting it. Plumbing inspector, electrical inspector can, but it has to be approved by the town.
So the electrical inspector can, but the plumbing can, huh?
Yeah, that's, that's what I found in the.
And I think the other thing is our, our electrician and our plumber are really, they're, they're building department, or facilities department employees that specialize in electric, electrical work and plumbing, but they also do snow removal. I mean, they're on roofs clearing ice dams and doing other work during the week. So they're not, you know, it would be a real conflict in terms of scheduling, even, even if they could do it. You know, there'd be people at home waiting for their kitchen to be inspected, and, you know, our guys would maybe have to be called out on a town plumbing emergency. So it just, we, we did look into it, Paul, it just didn't, it just doesn't work for, for, certainly doesn't work legally for the plumber, but it doesn't work for the town in terms of keeping operations going.
Plus, they, they, doing inspections, they'd have to have a vehicle. Right now, these guys use their own vehicles. They get paid a stipend for gas, but town employees, they'd probably be taking a town car, so that's another expense.
I, I've often wondered, I think I've even talked with you before, it's very, it's first very, I've ever lived in that the, that the community didn't have their own inspectors.
I don't have any other town that uses a plumbing inspector that works for the town to do inspections.
Yeah, no, I mean, that we didn't hire our own inspectors and have them staff. I, every place I've ever lived, they were employees of the, the inspectors were part of the code enforcement task force.
Yes, yes.
They weren't a contract employee.
Well.
I'll go that out because of our time.
It could, it could be up here, Paul. It could be the small towns.
That's where the problem arose, from the procurement side.
Right. And the chances of finding one person that fits everything is just not going to happen, is it? The animal's not out there.
So what was the, what was the concern about going out with the bid process?
My fear was that there'd be too many people bidding on it, and it's, it's a time thing. When somebody's doing, we'll say, a bathroom over, a kitchen over, they want those inspections done timely manner. You know, I'm getting the call saying, where are they? So if you're putting out to bid, I think it would be a problem getting people there on time.
I'm concerned about cost as well, I think.
You wouldn't put out, I mean, you would put out the bid, the position, right, not.
Bid the position.
Not each inspector.
Right.
I just want to make sure.
But with all contracted services, there's an issue with, you know, reliability, accountability, and timeliness. When they're not reporting directly to you, it's harder to enforce that. And, um, as he said, you don't want someone stuck, caught waiting while a contractor, a contracted, you know, vendor isn't showing up. The other thing is, I, I have concerns about costs, you know, this being a much more cost-effective option for the town than the bid. Now, I haven't tested that, but just, for a wide variety of reasons, this made much better sense for us.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else for, uh, Mr. Heathen? Okay. You got anything, something else we can discuss?
Do you want to withdraw the motion, the main motion?
Yes, I withdraw the motion to approve the town manager's operational budget.
Okay.
Can I also, if I could, ask Karen Caitman?
Oh, absolutely, Paul. Karen, would you like to come up, please?
No one ever asks you a question. You just sit back there so quiet, so they're going to. Got a question for you. Because there's something, I think the board needs to consider when you're looking at the budget. Thank you. There's an association that the library belongs to, and I don't know if it's Lynx or Mars or something, which we have been asking for exemptions for a number of years on, correct?
Yes.
And I'm not sure which one, if you could explain what that is.
Central, Western.
Central, Western, Mass.
Okay, CWMS.
Regional, right, CWMS.
And what is that dollar amount that we're not hitting, that we keep asking for an exemption?
Well, they have a formula that is based on the previous three years municipal appropriation requirement, it's the average of the past three years, let me just get that exactly for you, I have it in here.
Are those two separate issues, though, CWMS and the requirement to meet the budget threshold?
Yes, CWMS is, is our regional network that we belong to. The requirement is through the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners.
Okay.
Which are two different entities.
But I thought that the ones connected to the other in terms of asking for the exemption continues to, allows you to continue to be in that group or something like that.
Right, because it allows us to be a certified library.
Okay. And so, when we're looking at the budget, we, we haven't, and I know at times the friends have kicked in for certain things in the budget and so forth.
Right.
What's that dollar amount that we're missing on that we haven't hit?
For fiscal year 16, it would be a difference of $68,000.
Okay.
The requirement is, Mass. general law states that a municipality must appropriate a figure of at least the average of the last three years municipal appropriations to the library for operations, increased by two and a half percent in order to be certified for state aid to public libraries.
Okay. And then the last question I have is, is at the library, at the Friends of Library, or whatever, the Board of Directors of the Library, I'm sorry. Obviously, they've looked at the budget and it's gone through and come through the town manager to the select board, and there's no concerns about, obviously, getting another extension.
Um.
I shouldn't say that. Are there concerns about getting another extension?
Well, the concern would be if the Board of Library Commissioners were to stop giving unlimited number of waivers, and we were really in jeopardy of not getting our state aid and not being certified. Right now, the climate is that they are giving unlimited waivers.
Okay.
So, you know, we have taken advantage of that here in the town, as several other towns have taken advantage of. They are looking at that formula, they are looking to revamp the formula, because it doesn't seem to really be working anymore.
Okay.
So, it's an issue, but I guess we'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything, Mr. Gold?
I'm all set.
Mr. Santinello?
Good, thank you, thank you for indulging me.
Okay.
Not many people do.
Yeah. You wanted to talk some about the, no, you want to talk about the capital?
I just want to talk about the capital, I don't know that we need to go over again other than there were a couple of items I wanted to mention.
Okay.
Over here, go.
Sure.
At the last meeting, we spoke a couple of things, one is that, that we're not spending as much on roads and streets as some would like us to, and in fact, our, I don't know how to put this, the preliminary, or the expected, or the desired amount of money on road repairs would have been $600,000, but it's only $400,000, because we have other needs for, for, for cap, capital. But one of the things that struck me is that, that we had a deferred payment of Chapter 90 money that came from the state, what, $215,000, $220,000, something like that?
$240,000.
$240,000, okay, deferred money from the state. Unfortunately, we similarly had a, a situation, we had a culvert, it's Crestview Circle culvert, that needs to be repaired. And, and the thing that struck me was that, that the Crestview Circle culvert is a, is a special need. It, it came up, we didn't see it, now you see it, we've got to do it, it's the only access in and out of that road, and we see it, but if we had not had this additional funds from state aid, it's likely we would have gone forward trying to bond the Crestview Circle project. Crestview Circle project is hopefully going to be a repair of the last, pick a number, 20 years, hopefully more than that. And so, I guess if we're concerned that we, that we ought to be putting, or we'd like to put more money into, into the roads and streets, I'd like to have the select board consider over the next couple of days, you know, might we want to actually bond the Crestview Circle project, take the cost of that bond, and, you know, Mr. Pesterzak will tell us whether it's a 10-year bond, or a 20-year bond, or whatever it is, let's say it's even just a 10-year bond, and take that and reduce that from the capital budget, but that really does free up another significant amount of money to allow us to put more money into the roads, which was our original intent when we bumped up the allocation to, to capital for this year. And I only say that because we seem to be taking good advantage of this deferred payment from the state, but we'd be doing Crestview Circle anyway, we're bonding it anyway, ought we not bond it anyway, and allow us to use this deferred money to actually take care of more roads. I'm not going to make a motion tonight, but it's, but it's a potential proposal, you know, Mr. Pesterzak, I'd ask that maybe you could look at, look at some of the dollars and what the implication is, I know that all the money, you know, there's, there's capital in, excuse me, there's principal and interest payments on, on a bond, so it doesn't all become available for roads, but if, you know, if for the next period of time that we bond this, we might consider doing it, and that's all I want to bring up to people.
Well, I think we discussed that Monday night, and we did discuss the possibility of bonding, I know that Mr. Grant was really encouraging us to look to bond that project and move it back into pavement and road, so that we would bring it up to the 600 that we were hoping to get to, but I think it was also pointed out to us Monday night, is even though we're not doing what we were hoping to do, we're still doing substantially more this year, this year's budget than last year's budget. So we are moving up in our investments in our roads and pavements, though, as Mr. Grant says, the bonding is a possibility of leveraging that up a little bit more, so that could be a motion, I know that he was requesting that we do, we can do that on Monday, too.
And in fact, I'd like to see some distribution of that money to sidewalks and roads, not just all into roads, I know our sidewalk budget was cut, and I got a, my personal opinion is that there are areas in town where the sidewalks are far more critical in nature than the, than the roads in terms of needing to do something where, that's on the walkway to schools where kids are walking, so. And I don't, and I don't know the proper amount of money, but we ought to come up with this.
Five million?
Yes. Well, before Monday, if we could just get everything maybe right out, possible amendments, so that we could just start pounding them out, because I know we've done a lot of discussion on Monday night, on a lot of these issues.
Yeah, yeah, one in your inbox.
Hmm?
Alex sent out.
Well, he sent out one, but, you know, there's, there's several different, different options.
Yeah, so write up an amendment, and then which way you want it to go, he's got one that he wants it to go, and then maybe we'll be able to vote on the budget on Monday.
Right, I mean, but, but this is, this is just the capital, the capital.
And the capital.
Distribution.
Right, you know, because we, we can't really afford to get too, too hung out, when does the budget have to be approved?
Monday.
Monday was the date we need to get the Friday.
To allow them so many dates.
That's the drop dead date.
Basically, yeah, I mean, they need so many, so many days to act in order to get the printer out to the public, and all, meeting all those deadlines.
Okay. I again, you know, expressed my reservations, and we've got a full agenda Monday, we've got a lot of stuff that's going to be coming before our board, but I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for us to do two-two votes and just keep dispelling items, and we always hope we can get the whole board, and I just don't see the productive nature, yeah.
I'll, I'll make the comment now then, instead of Monday. I, I, we haven't looked at the, the numbers, but, you know, in principle, I don't, I'm not opposed to bonding long-term capital projects, but I do want to reiterate what Marie said, one of Mark's favorite expressions, or one of my favorite expressions of Mark's is, how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time? And I think it's really a credit to the board for really focusing on this issue much more in recent years than they have in the past, I know since I got here, during my interview, it was highlighted as a focus of the board, and we really have been moving in the right direction quite a bit. I think when you look at the, as I said, Monday, when you look at the dollar expenditures on capital, they've increased last three years, substantially increased. And then the, the board went ahead and adopted a policy of two and a half percent of general fund revenues for capital, which was a half a percent more than we had been doing, and put in a quarter percent a year kicker to make sure the commitment maintained, so I do think that, you know, on one level, you can never do it, the town simply could not afford to do all it wants to do for capital, but we are doing everything we can afford to do this year. So I do, like I said, I, that was a focus for us, we would have loved to have come in fully funding the pavement and the sidewalks, but to balance out suppressing facilities needs, we had to make some select, you know, some recommendations that we thought were in the overall business to the town, but whether it's our recommendation or the board's, I think it's the people at home ought to know that the commitment to improving the town and the infrastructure is steadfast either way, so I don't want, the disagreement about the provision isn't a disagreement about the importance of capital, I just want to make sure the folks know, know that.
In regard to Crestview, just very quickly, something to think about, you know, Alex had put together a proposal, and you folks may have read it in his email, to do a 10-year bond, I would be against that, only because of the bonding costs associated with the 10-year bond, it's supposed to roll it over for five years. If we rolled it over for five years, it's basically, you know, less than $50,000 annually. You take that $50,000 away from the 219, you roughly have $160,000, you can reapply to whatever capital you want. The town manager's recommendation, his last recommendation was for 2.49 million, that was $167,000 less than what we allocated when we had a balanced budget, you would have $367,000 to reallocate towards capital without, you know, without changing anything, to add back into whatever capital you want by doing that little process.
You got to give me those numbers again, how does 219,000 turn into 300?
Magic, Mark.
I know.
Magic.
First of all, the town manager's capital recommendation is $167,000 short than what we put in, in the budget at this point in time, and the main reason for that is the boiler. So you have 166.
No, I amended that.
To 1.4?
Yeah.
Okay.
The Capital Planning Committee's recommendation.
Oh, yeah, the Capital Planning Committee.
Okay, you still have about $180,000 then to reallocate.
Right.
Okay, all right. Yeah, okay, so take the two, two-something and take out the $15,000, okay.
Right.
I get that, okay. That's why we asked you to look at what the, the five, a five-year band, rolling over bands makes more sense than than a 10-year bond.
Right, it would, you'd have to do it, you know, to avoid all those issuance costs.
I'd buy, I'd buy that.
It seemed like, my memory is right, it seemed like I put that on the table our last meeting, it seemed like somebody pounded all over me on this issue, but I'm glad it's come around, and now it's going to be recommended, so this is, we're making progress.
It's now everyone's idea.
Yeah, now it's everybody's idea.
And then became Alex's, and then became Mark's.
I know you've been the one who pounded on you, but I don't think I did, but.
No, he did.
He did.
Yeah, he did, no, you didn't, Paul, he did.
No, because this is like deja vu, I think, two years ago, a year ago, we talked about bonding water projects, and sewer projects, and road projects, and we did that, and then we turned it into a bond. So instead of paying it off in five years, we're not going to pay it off in 10 or 15 years. And there was a reason why specifically, before we get all hopped up on bonding, is we bumped up capital planning, so that we wouldn't have to do that again. And if you add up the numbers, folks, I don't know what numbers you have, but if I look at sidewalks that are being repaired, and roadways, and I come up with a total of 1.4 million. Take that into consideration, that every water and sewer project that has gotten done in town last year and this year will have new roads on top of them. So I think we're, we're accomplishing the goal, I just, you know, to, to then take another lump sum of money, and then bond it again, which is the reason, then reduce the, the amount of money that we allocate to capital, because that's exactly why we bumped it up, was that, so we wouldn't go through bonding again, because we take the bands, and then we turn them into bonds, and whatever.
We, and we have these discussions, I, I think there's one point I'd like to mention, too, I was doing some work on some figures today, in the last four to five years, we've increased our contributions on sidewalk maintenance by 8,000% as far as the money being expended, and we're still 30 years out on having them all done, so it's, it's a monumental, I think we're doing about 1.65 miles or so a year now, somewhere in that range, or.
We're taking bigger bites of the elephant.
Yeah, we're taking bigger bites, and I, I guess, I guess the only thing we can say, I understand Paul's point, and everybody's point is very valid, that's the hard thing about budget, everybody's point's valid, but on your capital program, if, if the board could get to a point where they say, okay, we're going to set aside this money, and this money is sacred, and nobody can touch it anymore, so they can't dabble back in and grab and play games, because you make that much of a commitment to the infrastructure, it's the only way we'll ever get to see the curve, we don't know where the breakpoint is, I'm working on some graphs now, is where's the breakpoint on roads, how much do we have to put in for a year, and 30 years from now, we get that breakpoint, we're doing it more or less on schedule, and we're going to take massive infusions of money from someplace to get us up to there, but that's what you want to do, is get to that happy medium to where you're on, you're controlling your slippage. And right now, I checked the 2014 report against the 2009 report, and we're still slipping on roads, and yet we've made some phenomenal improvements, but there's still slippage, and there will be, I mean, they predicted there was going to be slippage, because we're not putting enough money in, and the state's not helping us either, and we're hoping that we get Chapter 90 formula changed, and bring attention to a community like yours where we got cut through traffic. So, but everything's set up here, people at home, you're listening, there's not a thing that's, that's wrong, it's all true, it's, it's just, I mean, Mr. Santinello talks about the credit card and then going to a mortgage, that's absolutely true, but it's also what every community in America is doing, we're not doing anything that other communities don't do. Thanks to our CFO and town manager, and this select board, we have excellent bond rating, and we've kept it, and it's because we're doing business right. It may, it may sound sometimes, especially comments that are made, that we're not doing it right, but we are doing it right, and we should be, everyone should be congratulating, including our CFO especially, provides this guidance on how to make the right decisions, but it is a big puzzle, and it's hard to keep it moving. So I think everybody's doing a fantastic job, it's amazing, we're as good a shape as we are. Can we, any entertainment for any votes tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
Or, I hate to, I hate to give up on a night like this, but not much, okay, there is one other item, we had discussed, there was concern, well, not a concern, the board had asked about, we obviously have three of our division chiefs that are going to retire, and that's like a lunar event happening in a town, it just doesn't happen, and the stresses are, you know, how do we, how do we staff and bring everybody up to speed, and Stephen, you and I have chatted a little bit about it, and I told the board that we would, we would come forth, so why don't you come forth?
Okay, just briefly, obviously, we don't have a, I guess the, the short of it is, we're working on it, we, it is within, I don't know, maybe 60 days, the, those three gentlemen have served the town for a long time, will be no longer in their positions, which obviously is a big loss for the community and for the town organization, and so we have, we're initiating Operation Big Shoes to help, to replace these guys. The three situations are unique, the three departments are unique, and so there's not going to be one approach I'm going to take for all three positions. We have already retained a, a search firm to help us with the fire chief, we're reviewing options for that, for the police department, and as well as the DPW, like I said, each situation is different, so it's not going to be a single fix, but we are working actively, right now, our human resources department is working on a timeline to lay out kind of, you know, lay out, project advertising dates and things like that, and see, are we going to have a gap based on not only our timeline to select somebody, but also projecting like a 60-day notice requirement on somebody else's end, and say, so how long would we need someone to be an interim, or an acting, or be without a position, or, so, and I don't know if it'll be done Monday, but in the, in the coming weeks, we'll have that schedule kind of projected for each of the positions, and I'll be able to share more information about the direction I'm heading in terms of filling those positions.
But you do, you do have a contract out right now for the.
Yeah, the process for the fire chief is underway.
Yeah, that one, that you've already signed that.
The first step in this, the first step in that is kind of creating a profile, I know the Collins Center did the first town manager search, and they do a similar thing, where they create a community profile, and the ideal candidate, and MRI does a similar thing, and then, once we have that drafted, it'll, we'll still circulate it, they, the benefit of having a, the search firm is that not only do they, do they help you screen candidates, but they know the pool of candidates very well, so when the, for the lack of a better term, the usual suspects apply, they've interacted with many of them, and they may and they may know people who aren't actively looking but could be a good fit. So like I said, that process is underway, and we're going to try and really make sure that the transition times are seamless and as smooth as possible.
I would, I would, I'm going to put some pressure on you. I would assume we would have a strategy in hand by a week from now, and you'd be able to brief the board on your strategy.
There's some, some moving parts on that. I, I hope so, too. I mean, I want to get it, I want to know what I'm doing.
Yeah, one third taken care of already.
Right.
Okay.
So I, we're working on it.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, and it's MRI, what's municipal resources?
They assisted us on the casino surrounding community process. We were successful on that, so I have high faith in them.
Yeah, and they were, there's no secrecy on the contract cost?
That's $5,000.
Yeah, $5,000. So that's, that's not a bad cost.
No.
I haven't read Scope Works, see what we get out of them. And let's see, tomorrow you will be paneling a selection group for the DPW study.
We did get four proposals for design for a DPW facility. We are going to be, we have a select, a kind of designer selection committee. It's a Chapter 7 procurement, so you need a designer selection committee. It'll be myself, Richard and members of the DPW team. I intend to appoint a town manager's task force for the project, and we've kind of been going over some names of some town residents that we think could be helpful to the effort. And so we'll be, I'll be presenting some information on that.
Now, if, if you will make a selection tomorrow, I guess you'll make a recommendation tomorrow, won't you?
I don't know if we'll, we may. I mean, we have to see how everybody feels. If there's disparate opinion on the four firms, it may, I mean, you'd need to do some greater research on references and things like that. If everybody kind of coalesces around one proposal, it can shorten the timeline.
Have you had the brass knuckles and belts all delivered to the negotiation room?
Not yet. Unfortunately, on the, on designer selection, you're just looking at qualifications, not price.
Right, right. Yeah, and that's a good, that's a good point, because you do not know the price at this point.
You select a firm and then you open the price proposal.
You're looking at qualifications only. And you have four proposals, and they're fairly, fairly thick, about half inch thick, so.
Good fir-, I mean, all good firms.
All good firms.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there anything else, current events, do you think of?
We did post some information on our website, you know, kind of pothole driving tips. And I think I just want to, you know, we've had some complaints today. It's bad, it's going to get worse. I'd love to tell you that we're beyond the worst of it. I don't think we are. I think when I, a gentleman came by the office who had lost a tire, and I shared his frustration, but the asphalt plants are closed this time of year. And you guys all know this from hearing about projects, but the people out there may not. And so we use coal pat, coal pads, which is really granular material that you fill, you fill the hole, and if the hole has got water in it, it makes it very difficult to do that. And if you have another freeze thaw, it pushes the material out, or people driving over it kind of, that's why when you drive over puddles and filled, you hear that clinking noise of the stuff hitting your wheel wells. We stay on it as best we can, but they are really only Band-Aids and not very good ones at that. The other thing is, we're out filling potholes we're aware of. We have our YourGov app. We hope everyone will help us in finding a, identifying potholes and submitting requests to have them filled, so we can stay on it. And we're just, you know, it's, it's a daily battle. But we urge people's caution. Check out the driving tips on the website, and, you know, good luck.
I haven't checked out your website for the driving tips, but I can, I can tell some people that drive around town, if you see a puddle in the middle of the road or on the side of the road during the winter, assume it is a pothole that is filled with water, please.
Yeah.
It's about a 90% chance that's what it is.
Yeah. There could be a foot of water in that hole.
There could be a foot of water, but just assume that it is a pothole and use do caution when you enter those areas. Anything else from any of the board members? Yes. Okay. Anything else from CFO? Okay, accept the motion to adjourn?
Agreed.
Second? All in favor? Good evening, folks, and we'll see you Monday for our next budget meeting. And hopefully we'll wrap it up at that time.